Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Organizational and Regular Meeting for January 13th, 2025 in the VHS Commons. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Ms. Dodge.
Here.
Four members present and two school board members present.
Next, we'd like to have all of our citizens of the month come over here to the microphone, please.
Everly.
Everly.
Kindergarten.
What would you like to be?
A nail designer.
Very nice. That's the first one. Want to stand in front of the table? All right. All right, what's your name?
J. Russell.
J. Russell. What grade are you in?
Second grade.
What would you like to be in the role?
A construction worker.
Awesome. Thank you.
Kid one.
Kid one.
What grade are you in? Second.
What would you like to be in the role?
Camera.
Camera. What's your name?
Dee.
What is it?
Dee.
Dee. What grade are you in?
Junior.
In kindergarten? Nice. What would you like to be in the role?
Baseball.
Baseball, I agree too. So stand over here.
Nope.
Over here, bud. Can you stand with everybody else? What's your name?
Ellie.
What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
What would you like to be in the role?
A teacher.
A teacher, very nice.
Great job.
All right, if everyone can stand and pledge allegiance, please. So let's turn around and we'll face the flag, right?
Your right hand on your corner.
All right, you guys gonna help me?
Yeah.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you, yeah.
Good job.
I had one words.
That's good. I'm glad I got through it one more time.
All right.
So the next item is part of our organizational meeting. It is the election of officers for 2025. First of all, we need to nominate a president pro temp to conduct this portion of the meeting.
I'll nominate Chris Habermill.
One second.
Any objections? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
Item two is to elect a president for the 2025 calendar year for the Board of Education, and I would like to nominate Shelley Innes.
I'll second. I'll move, I'll second.
Yeah.
I'll move.
I moved, you seconded, right?
Okay.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
For item three, we need to nominate a vice president. I'll nominate Mark Benson for vice president.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations or questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
Item four is to appoint Chris Habermill to serve as the legislative liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025.
I'll move.
A second.
Unless Crystal wants to keep it.
No, I'm ready to cast the torch.
All right, call the roll, please.
That's it.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
And item five is to appoint Sarah Stepp to serve as the student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025. I'll move.
I'll second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
And item five is to appoint Sarah Stepp to serve as the student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025. I'll move.
I'll second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
And item five is to elect a president for the 2025 calendar year for the Board of Education, and I would like to nominate Shelley Innes.
I'll second. I'll move, I'll second.
Yeah.
I'll move.
I moved, you seconded, right?
Okay.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
For item three, we need to nominate a vice president. I'll nominate Mark Benson for vice president.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations or questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
Item four is to appoint Chris Habermill to serve as the legislative liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025.
I'll move.
A second.
Unless Crystal wants to keep it.
No, I'm ready to cast the torch.
All right, call the roll, please.
That's it.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
And item five is to appoint Chris Habermill to serve as the legislative liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025.
I'll move.
A second.
Unless Crystal wants to keep it.
No, I'm ready to cast the torch.
All right, call the roll, please.
That's it.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
And item five is to appoint Sarah Stepp to serve as the student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025. I'll move.
I'll second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
And item five is to appoint Sarah Stepp to serve as the student achievement liaison with the Ohio School Board Association for 2025. I'll move.
I'll second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
Switch spots.
If you want to.
Okay. Stay there. All right, it's all you.
Okay, item eight. Number one, to establish this, these are our standing resolutions for 2025. To establish the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM for the day and time of regular board meetings for 2025 to be held at Vermillion High School in the Commons, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, Ohio, as listed. Number two, designate the Vermillion Photo Journal as the official newspaper. Three, direct the treasurer to provide copies of the minutes of the last meeting two days prior to the next regular meeting and to waive the reading of the minutes if said is done. Four, authorize the treasurer to pay on abstracts and invoices monthly salaries and bills with the approved appropriations. Request from the Erie and Lorraine County Auditors advances on tax settlements as monies are collected. Invest the funds of the district as they are available. Establish funds as necessary when requested by law or auditor of state. Approve student activity funds, purpose statements, and budgets. Open and read bids immediately after the time for filing of bids has expired. Establish a service fund in the amount allowed by law of $3,500 for the Board of Education within the general fund for the remainder of fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026. Authorize the treasurer to submit the alternative tax budget for fiscal year 2026 to the Budget Commission in a timely manner. Authorize the treasurer to serve as the designee of the members of the Board of Education for public records training as required by law. Number five, authorize the superintendent or his designee to act as the purchasing agent. Approve the emergency and temporary employment of personnel in compliance with policy. Accept resignations of personnel on behalf of the Board of Education. Authorize the building principals to sign contracts such as student activity contracts, student pictures, school yearbooks, athletic contests, and the like. Appoint the superintendent or his designee as the Board of Education's hearing officer for appeals of suspensions and expulsions of students. Appoint the superintendent as the board's designee to hear student expulsion appeals. Appoint Dr. David Hile superintendent to serve on the Vermillion City Parks and Recreation Board for 2025. Authorize the superintendent to approve participation in state and federal programs and grants and authorize him to appoint designees to represent Vermillion for fiscal year 2026. Item number six, appoint Pepel and Wagner LTD as general legal counsel.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
That concludes the organizational part of tonight's meeting. Now we're moving on to the regular school board meeting. Item one, legislative report. Crystal?
We don't have one tonight because of the passing of the torch, so, you know, we're gonna forego that tonight.
Oh, good, unless they were on recess.
Yeah, there's some stuff happening. I was kinda trying to keep up on it a little bit, some new things that were passed, so next month should be exciting for Chris, yeah.
I'm on the hook.
Item number two, student liaison report.
We have Christian Schneider, VHS art teacher, and honors art students will present information on the National Art Society.
Hello, my name is Heather Cruz.
And I'm Ray Virgell.
And we are the presidents of the National Art Honor Society in Vermillion, and this is the NHS's first year at Vermillion High School, and we have 13 members in total with 10 of them being seniors.
This has been a long time coming, and we have been working with Miss Schneider to make this happen for us. The NHS is an honor society of students who not only excel in academics but also in the arts, and we are here to bring art to the community in Vermillion, and we're really passionate about that. We work with the Public Art Vermillion Council to do that.
We also do fundraisers and community service throughout the year to help raise money for the NHS and to push artwork out there for the students have made. One of the fundraisers was Art With Pumpkins that we did in the fall, which was outside of VHS, and it just made people create, you know, like paint pumpkins or car pumpkins and just show off their artwork while helping our art and NHS. And we also did, we were part of like a craft show in Sabrina Middle School that we sold art that we have made, that NHS have made, and we made a lot of money to help our club.
As well as the community. And our indictment for the new members is this Wednesday, and we invite all of you to join us. It's at 6:00 PM in the library.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're very lucky here at VHS to have such a great art program and students. Wow. Item three, student board member report.
Paige has it for today.
So as we transition into the second semester, students are excited to have a clean slate and finish the school year off pretty strong. Midterms went smoothly. Some were concerned after only having one day back from break that they were gonna be a little rocky, but everyone had good results and are glad to have them done and over with. The National Honor Society held tutoring during doc time and after school for any students who wanted extra prep or help with midterms, and that tutoring will continue throughout the school year in the morning for anyone who needs extra support on an assignment or in a certain subject.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you. Item four, public participation on agenda items only. This time is allotted for community members to speak to the board regarding an item or items on this agenda, and we have Kathleen Byer. Are you for this part, or do you want the other one?
The other one.
The other one, okay. Moving on then. Item five, superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
I just, as always, January is School Board Recognition Month, so I'd like to read our statement of recognition for our board members. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children, and whereas Chris Habermill, Sarah Stepp, Crystal Russell, Shelley Innes, Mark Benson, Nick Freeman, and Paige Dodge contribute greatly to this community through their services on the Vermillion Local Board of Education, and whereas these local decision-makers set the policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress towards the school district's goals and maintains two-way communication with all segments of the community, and whereas these school board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's future, now therefore I, Dr. David Hile, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Vermillion Local School Board and proclaim the month of January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month of Vermillion Local Schools. I hereby urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and in working with them to provide an education system that helps every adult, help every child succeed today, tomorrow, and beyond. So thank you all for your service. It takes courage to do this and to make the decisions you have to make, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
All right, on to nine, treasurer's report and/or recommendations.
Thank you. Recommend a resolution to the board to approve the financial report for December 2024, and that's attachment A.
I'll move.
A second. All right, so first we'll start with general fund revenue by month through the month of December. The district received $12.5 million in general fund revenue compared to $11.975 last year at this time and $11.2 million in fiscal year '23. The district is on pace to collect slightly more than its historical average revenue. Moving on to the food service side of revenue, through the month of December, we've received $380,000 in the food service fund compared to $346,000 last year and $361,000 in fiscal year '23. As such, food service should continue to collect its historical average revenue, and then looking at all funds through the month of December, the district received $13.7 million in all funds compared to $13.3 million at this time last year and $12.3 million in fiscal year '23. And then for a longer historical average look at revenue, over the last eight fiscal years, so fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '24, the district averaged $12.7 million compared to our $13.7 million now. This year, we did sell one of our buildings, 935 Decatur, for $314,000 after auction fees, and we also sold our laptops back to Apple for $263,000. On the expenditure side, looking at the general fund through the month of December, we've expended $13.9 million from the general fund compared to $13.9 million at this time last year and $14.3 in fiscal year '23. The district can expect to spend slightly more this year than it did last year, and then below is a breakdown of the individual general fund costs year over year. Our salaries are slightly higher than they were last year at this time. Our insurance and retirement benefits are basically right in line with where they were at this time last year. Purchase services are slightly below last year, supplies slightly below last year, capital outlay slightly more. When you get down to it, we're at $13.92 this year versus $13.97 last year. So again, we're right on pace where we were last year. Salaries, though, are a little bit higher this year, and they'll continue to creep up. Moving on to the food service expenditures through the month of December, we've expended $516,000 in the food service fund compared to $410,000 last year and $438,000 in fiscal year '23. Our spending should be slightly higher than our historical averages. Earlier on the year, I think it was August or September, we had bought some additional capital for the cafeterias there that drove that cost up, actually looking at the bar chart, it was in September. And then looking at all funds through the month of December, we've expended $15.5 million from all funds compared to $16.5 at this time last year and $16.4 in fiscal year '23. And then looking at the cash side through the month of December, we have a total of $14.8 million in cash compared to $15.3 million last year and $15.7 in fiscal year '23. On the food service side through the month of December, we have a total of $265,000 in cash compared to $350,000 at this time last year and $301,000 in fiscal year '23. And then when we pile everything together and we have all of our cash through the month of December, we have a total of $17.7 million in all cash in all funds compared to $18.5 in fiscal year '24 and $20.2 million in fiscal year '23. The next page is a breakdown of that $17.7 million by fund. And then lastly, we take a look at the investment side of things. Through December, we've earned a total of $392,465.40 in interest compared to $316,829.43 at this time last year. So far, the difference this year is positive $75,635.97 or roughly 24 percent more. Any questions?
I'll roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodge.
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
That concludes the organizational part of tonight's meeting. Now we're moving on to the regular school board meeting. Item one, legislative report. Crystal?
We don't have one tonight because of the passing of the torch, so, you know, we're gonna forego that tonight.
Oh, good, unless they were on recess.
Yeah, there's some stuff happening. I was kinda trying to keep up on it a little bit, some new things that were passed, so next month should be exciting for Chris, yeah.
I'm on the hook.
Item number two, student liaison report.
We have Christian Schneider, VHS art teacher, and honors art students will present information on the National Art Society. [inaudible]
Hello, my name is Heather Cruz.
And I'm Ray Virgell.
And we are the presidents of the National Art Honor Society in Vermillion, and this is the NHS's first year at Vermillion High School, and we have 13 members in total with 10 of them being seniors.
This has been a long time coming, and we have been working with Miss Schneider to make this happen for us. The NHS is an honor society of students who not only excel in academics but also in the arts, and we are here to bring art to the community in Vermillion, and we're really passionate about that. We work with the Public Art Vermillion Council to do that.
We also do fundraisers and community service throughout the year to help raise money for the NHS and to push artwork out there for the students have made. One of the fundraisers was Art With Pumpkins that we did in the fall, which was outside of VHS, and it just made people create, you know, like paint pumpkins or car pumpkins and just show off their artwork while helping our art and NHS. And we also did, we were part of like a craft show in Sabrina Middle School that we sold art that we have made, that NHS have made, and we made a lot of money to help our club.
As well as the community. And our indictment for the new members is this Wednesday, and we invite all of you to join us. It's at 6:00 PM in the library.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're very lucky here at VHS to have such a great art program and students. Wow. Item three, student board member report.
Paige has it for today.
So as we transition into the second semester, students are excited to have a clean slate and finish the school year off pretty strong. Midterms went smoothly. Some were concerned after only having one day back from break that they were gonna be a little rocky, but everyone had good results and are glad to have them done and over with. The National Honor Society held tutoring during doc time and after school for any students who wanted extra prep or help with midterms, and that tutoring will continue throughout the school year in the morning for anyone who needs extra support on an assignment or in a certain subject.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you. Item four, public participation on agenda items only. This time is allotted for community members to speak to the board regarding an item or items on this agenda, and we have Kathleen Byer. Are you for this part, or do you want the other one?
The other one.
The other one, okay. Moving on then. Item five, superintendent's report and/or recommendations.
As always, January is School Board Recognition Month, so I'd like to read our statement of recognition for our board members. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children, and whereas Chris Habermill, Sarah Stepp, Crystal Russell, Shelley Innes, Mark Benson, Nick Freeman, and Paige Dodge contribute greatly to this community through their services on the Vermillion Local Board of Education, and whereas these local decision-makers set the policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress towards the school district's goals and maintains two-way communication with all segments of the community, and whereas these school board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's future, now therefore I, Dr. David Hile, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Vermillion Local School Board and proclaim the month of January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month of Vermillion Local Schools. I hereby urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of and we have 13 members in total, with 10 of them being seniors. This has been a long time coming, and we have been working with Miss Schneider to make this happen for us. The NHS is an honor society of students who not only excel in academics, but also in the arts. And we are here to bring art to the community in Vermillion, and we're really passionate about that. We work with the Public Art Vermillion Council to do that.
We also do fundraisers and community service throughout the year to help raise money for the NHS and to push artwork out there for the students have made. One of the fundraisers was Art with Pumpkins that we did in the fall, which was outside of VHS. And it just made people crave, you know, like, hey, pumpkins or car pumpkins, and just show off their artwork while helping our, um, our, uh, NHS. And we also did, uh, we were a part of like a craft show in San Robert Middle School that we sold art that we have made, that NHS have made, and we made a lot of money to help our club, as well as the community.
And our indictment for the new members is this Wednesday, and we invite all of you to join us. It's at 6:00 PM in the library.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're very lucky here at VHS to have such a great art program. Item three, student board member reports.
Paige has it for today.
So, as we transition into the second semester, students are excited to have a clean slate and finish the school year off pretty strong. Midterms went smoothly. Some were concerned, after only having one day back from break, that they were gonna be a little rocky, but everyone had good results and are glad to have them done and over with. The National Honor Society held tutoring during doc time and after school for any students who wanted extra prep or help with midterms, and that tutoring will continue throughout the school year in the morning for anyone who needs extra support on an assignment or in a certain subject.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item four, public participation on agenda items only. This time is allotted for community members to speak to the board regarding an item or items on this agenda. And we have Kathleen Byer, are you for this part, or do you want the other one? Okay. Moving on then, item five, superintendents' report and/or recommendations.
I just, as always, January is school board recognition month, so I'd like to read our statement of recognition for our board members. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children, and whereas Chris Habermill, Sarah Step, Crystal Russell, Shelley Innes, Mark Benson, Nick Freeman, and Paige Dodge contribute greatly to this community through their services on the Vermillion Local Board of Education, and whereas these local decision makers set the policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school district operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress towards the school district's goals and maintains two-way communication with all segments of the community, and whereas these school board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, I, Dr. David Hile, do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Vermillion Local School Board and proclaim the month of January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month of Vermillion Local Schools. I hereby urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members, and in working with them to provide an education system that helps every adult, help every child succeed today, tomorrow, and beyond. So thank you all for your service. It takes courage to do this and to make the decisions you have to make, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
All right, on to nine, treasurer's report and/or recommendation.
Thank you. Recommend a resolution to the board to approve the financial report for December 2024, and that's attachment A.
I'll move.
A second.
All right, so first we'll start with general fund revenue by month. Through the month of December, the district received $12.5 million in general fund revenue compared to $11.975 last year at this time, and $11.2 million in fiscal year '23. The district is on pace to collect slightly more than its historical average revenue. Moving on to the food service side of revenue, through the month of December, we've received $380,000 in the food service fund compared to $346,000 last year and $361,000 in fiscal year '23. As such, food service should continue to collect its historical average revenue. And then looking at all funds through the month of December, the district received $13.7 million in all funds compared to $13.3 million at this time last year, and $12.3 million in fiscal year '23. And then for a longer historical average look at revenue, over the last eight fiscal years, so fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '24, the district averaged $12.7 million compared to our $13.7 million now. This year, we did sell one of our buildings, 935 Decatur, for $314,000 after auction fees, and we also sold our laptops back to Apple for $263,000. On the expenditure side, looking at the general fund through the month of December, we've expended $13.9 million from the general fund compared to $13.9 million at this time last year and $14.3 in fiscal year '23. The district can expect to spend slightly more this year than it did last year, and then below is a breakdown of the individual general fund costs year over year. Our salaries are slightly higher than they were last year at this time. Our insurance, retirement benefits are basically right in line with where they were at this time last year. Purchase services are slightly below last year. Supplies slightly below last year. Capital outlays slightly more. When you get down to it, we're at $13.92 this year versus $13.97 last year. So again, we're right on pace to where we were last year. Salaries, though, are a little bit higher this year, and they'll continue to creep up. Moving on to the food service expenditures through the month of December, we've expended $516,000 in the food service fund compared to $410,000 last year and $438,000 in fiscal year '23. Our spending should be slightly higher than our historical averages. Earlier on the year, I think it was August, more September, we had bought some additional capital for the cafeterias there that drove that cost up. Actually, looking at the bar chart, it was in September. And then looking at all funds through the month of December, we've expended $15.5 million from all funds compared to $16.5 at this time last year and $16.4 in fiscal year '23. And then looking at the cash side through the month of December, we have a total of $14.8 million in cash compared to $15.3 million last year and $15.7 in fiscal year '23. On the food service side, through the month of December, we have a total of $265,000 in cash compared to $350,000 at this time last year and $301,000 in fiscal year '23. And then when we pile everything together, and we have all of our cash through the month of December, we have a total of $17.7 million in all cash, in all funds, compared to $18.5 in fiscal year '24 and $20.2 million in fiscal year '23. The next page is a breakdown of that $17.7 million by fund. And then lastly, we take a look at the investment side of things. Through December, we've earned a total of $392,465.40 in interest compared to $316,829.43 at this time last year. So far, the difference this year is positive $75,635.97, or roughly 24 percent. Any questions? Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero. Item B, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the following donations: $2,200 from Defense Soap to Vermillion Athletics; $70 from Erie Inflatable Adventures LLC to Vermillion Athletics for a banner.
Seventy or seven hundred?
Seven hundred, I'm sorry. $990 from William Orwig to speech and debate; $250 from Vermillion Lions Club to speech and debate; $630 from McDonald's to Vermillion Athletics; $1,000 from Kiwanis Club to seventh grade Chicago trip; and $5,000 from VFW Ohio Charity to VHS Bowling.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero. Item C, recommend a resolution to approve the 2025-2026 alternative tax budget, and that's attachment B.
I'll move.
A second.
So what this is, every year, school districts need to submit an alternative or a tax budget to the county auditor no later than January 15th. What this shows, it shows a breakdown of our tax levies and the estimated amount that they will collect. Like, for example, if you're looking at it here, again, this is House Bill 920 and it's action there, but if you were to take our assessed millage, our assessed value, I should say, $969,009.230 divided by 1,000, multiply it times the maximum rate authorized of 35 mils for our 1976 levy, that would generate like $24 million. Clearly, that doesn't happen over time. As our values grow, our effective millage keeps getting reduced down, so it collects the same amount of money that it did when it was first passed in 1976. So again, that is what we're saying. We're basically taking that last column there and asking the Budget Commission to please collect this amount of taxes for our alternative tax budget. On the next page, this is our estimates for our revenues and our expenditures and our ending cash balance at the very bottom. Our ending cash balance is decreasing because we are spending money for capital improvements. We're estimated to spend money from our capital improvements from our general fund because we do not have another dedicated funding source. So what we're showing in the Budget Commission is, A, please collect this amount of money. We need to have this amount of money because we have this amount of expenses here. These expenses, as you can see, on revenues over expenditure, we are overspending slightly by $1 million, $1,600,000, and $1 million, $2 million almost next year. And that is because, again, for what these large capital improvements are gonna cost to keep up with these buildings. The next page over is for the bond levy for the library. This isn't any of our money, but we still do house this money. We collect this money on the taxes, we keep track of it, and we send it back to the library, and we make payments for the library also, for their bonds. This is just their amortization schedule for their bonds and the revenue associated with it. We're asking the county auditor to collect that amount of money to cover the bonds that they have and the payments. And then the last page, this is just showing all of our other funds outside of our general fund, and it's just showing the beginning cash balance. Again, this is for next school year. It's an estimate. It's showing our estimated beginning cash balance, our beginning estimated revenue that we'll bring in, and then subtracting what we think our estimated expenses are gonna be to give us an ending balance there. And so again, we're just providing all of that to the Budget Commission so that they can then, in fact, collect the taxes that we're asking them to do.
Any questions, Crystal?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero. And D, recommend a resolution determining to proceed with the submitting of the question of the issuance of school improvement bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $47 million to the electors of the school district pursuant to Section 13318 of the Revised Code. Add an election to be held on May 6, 2025, and that's attachment C.
I'll move.
I'll second.
So at the last special board meeting, I believe Mr. Habermill had asked me a question. The question was, do they always need to be done like this? Do they always need to have these questions in special board meetings? At the time, I answered yes. I was answering yes specific for that one. Just so everybody's clear, we can approve resolution number one, resolution number two in either special or regular. The reason we need to have special board meetings is the timing. A lot of these things are due at a specific time throughout the process, and so we wouldn't have been able to do that last one in a regular board meeting. That's the reason I answered no, we couldn't do it then. But this one, we can do in a regular board meeting, and I need to have this to the county electors before February 5.
That's like the deadline to get on the May ballot?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, but prior to that, there's a bunch of other things because it's a special election, reporting things back to the Department of Taxation, reporting things back to the Department of Workforce and Development. And so there's a couple other things that need to go on that don't need to be board-approved that I have to do behind the scenes. And so again, it's just the timing of things.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Before moving on to the consent agenda, I want to touch upon, again, all the donations from individuals and organizations to the district. They are very much appreciated, and it's very generous of them to do so. Onto item 10, the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting for December 9, 2024, and the special meeting in December 16, 2024. B, approve the revision of district policies as recommended for the second read, as listed. C, approve the revision of district policies as recommended for the first read, as listed. D, approve the 2025-2026 VHS course guide with changes. E, approve the payment of $500 every six months for the VTA negotiated agreement for the LPDC committee, as listed. F, approve the employment action. Underneath resignation, we have Hannah Alter, van driver and monitor effective December 20, 2024, and Samantha Taylor from bus monitor effective December 20, 2024, to van driver effective January 1, 2025. Item G, approve the one-year 2024-25 additional duties contract for the following: Brandon Gilbert, VHS girls assistant wrestling coach, and Barry Miller, SMS assistant wrestling coach. H, approve the position change of Brenda Lavandano from custodian VHS to head custodian VHS, and Wendy Valcheck from VHS head custodian to DES custodian. I, approve the one-year substitute contract for 2024-2025 for Rita Coprona.
Coprona?
Coprona, custodian. J, approve the one-year limited classified contract for the remainder of the 2024-25 school year to Kevin Hassanflue, VHS custodian, and Hope Schuster Calhoun, VHS custodian. K, approve the one-year non-teaching supplemental contract for the remainder of the 2024-25 school year to Marie Cox, accompanis. Any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda?
No.
I'll move to a sec.
I'll second. Any questions on any items? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero.
Item 11, dates and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Streets at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. Regular meeting Monday, February 10, 2025; regular meeting on Monday, March 10, 2025; and regular meeting on Monday, April 14, 2025. Item 12, public participation. The public participation section of the Board of Education's agenda is specifically designed for the public to address the board with their compliments, concerns, ideas, and/or questions. The board welcomes your comments. If you wish to address the board regarding an issue, the board would remind you of two things. First, your comments should be factual and respectful of the rights of others. And second, before coming to the board with an issue, you should have first addressed it with the appropriate teacher, staff member, or administrator. This meeting of the Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. And Kathleen Byer?
Good evening. I've been busy, but I have not forgotten about all of you. Last time I was here, the board allowed a member of your audience to accost me. When your meeting concluded, the public spoke. When your meeting concluded, the public spoke during public participation. And then you all decided to make statements not on your agenda about lifeways. You were speaking during public comment, to which I commented back to one of you, and some woman decided to try to intimidate me by getting up, sitting next to me in my chair while I was sitting down. And when I told you to stop her, you guys proceeded to act like I was the issue. On my way out the door that day, four women, some who are associated with the school, waited for me and decided to make rude statements to me as I walked out. Those same women conspired and colluded with Dr. Hile, falsely accusing me of trying to hit them with my car, which is completely false and something I would never do. But Dr. Hile stated that these women, to say these women, that he was trying to get me to stop coming to these meetings, and he instructed these women to make false police reports, which is documented on police body cameras, or their statements of what you said to them. Then a week later, Dr. Hile proceeded to ban me from the board meetings for six months, which he has no authority to do. The police then threatened with arrest if I drew to 10. I was never trespassed from this property. The board never voted to ban me from meetings, and no action would condone Dr. Hile or this board from legally banning me. You would have to have a vote, like you all did when you tried to ban Joe Jones in '22 with the, we had a hard time here. I am here tonight to let you know I'm back, and thank you. Because of all of you, HB passed, which is Parents' Bill Rights of Education, Religious Instruction, which is tonight. It's in that bill as well, which is why you guys banned me in the first place with the lifeways, so we can comment. It's not mandated by you guys. You guys have to enact, let it happen. I wrote a book, it'll be out later this year, about all of you and your staff's abhorrent behavior towards myself and my children, most of all, and the public who elects you. You will be served for the next two weeks to this incident. This time, it's not an empty threat. You violated my first, 14th, Fifth Amendment rights. You violated the Open Meetings Act. You caused my family unnecessary emotional stress and harm. And Dr. Hile reported your license, and hopefully with this lawsuit, I'll take your license because I believe you're unfit. But thank you, see you guys next month, and Happy New Year.
All right, moving on, item 13, adjournment. Motion to adjourn? I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Dodge?
Yes.
Motion approved four zero, and the time is 6:34 PM.